Preponderance of women there.
Yes, there were.
All right, it is 1:30 on Wednesday afternoon. And we are here to hear file number AM 0005-23. All this hearing order, our county zoning commission, we're not the zoning commission. As for roll call of commissioners.
Mr. Robins is present.
Present.
Brightsaw is present. Do you want to intend it and there are any that need to see here or participate in these proceedings? Hearing procedures on the screens, ask any changes to the agenda. The change to the agenda, ask motion to approve of changes. Okay. That will present its report, that will provide overview of project, answer questions from governing body, public testimony. In favor of, neutral, and against. Nobody here, so I guess. A little simpler, public testimony, limited three minutes per person, you may give your three minutes to another person, so they have up to six minutes. Public comments are limited, specifics of the application. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So there are, I think, eight changes in this proposed amendment. I would recommend, and what the planning commission did is took public comment on each section, looks like we have one person online. We also had Mr. Lynn Scott from the planning commission online, if you have any questions as to the intent behind the planning commission and their recommendation. So this is AM file, or file AM 0005-23, it's a text amendment revising chapters, or various subchapters of chapters two, six, and eight, title 12. And I'm Jake Gabel, the planning director. So as far as like the process and timeline of how, you know, code amendments happen coming through the planning department, at least since I've been the director for the last year. So typically, we are making adjustments to align to current, or align current practice and adjust current code to meet the original intent or current practice. To align the revised code with Idaho Code 6765, the local land use planning act. Or in accordance with some requests from legal counsel, so we do get occasionally, you know, Bill says, hey, this would be a good change, and we review that and see if, how to make that change and implement it the best. So this proposed draft was heard by the, first by the planning commission, the December, or sorry, it was proposed to the board of county commissioners, so, this was in our board update meetings, I gave copies December 13th, January 10th, and February 14th. After some discussion with you guys, we then made the application and held a hearing with the planning commission. That hearing took place on May 16th and was continued to June 6th, which, when, which is the date they made their recommendation. So, that's the typical process, so we have these eight points of discussion today, so some changes to BRCRC 12-215. Modifying some site plan requirements for zone changes and comp plan map changes. This results in requiring only a site plan drawn to scale and doesn't include, that does not include structures, utilities, yards, et cetera. We'll get into the rationale behind why on each one of these. The 12-225 changes is just to align that code section with Bonner County Revised Code 12 127 and 223. Just to clarify that the hearing examiner holds a decision-making authority for those conditional use permits. The changes in 12 660, 621, and 812, are changes to our depth to width ratios and how they're calculated, we saw some misuse of the interpretation and strict adherence to that, so we're making a proposed change to ensure that depth-to-width ratios can't be misused in the future, and then ensuring that the depth-to-width is essentially the same width the change. So it kind of gets a little technical, we'll get into it when I get to that code section. And then some other changes in 12-621, which is the addition to the lot design code to disallow land use actions, or specifically, chapter six land use actions from creating split zone properties. Updating submerged land standards as it relates to lots and parcel design, and removing submerged lands when calculating depth-to-width ratios. And then the fifth change is a proposed change to 12-661, which updates the minor land division code to modify the 30-day processing time limit for staff to 90 days. And then updating the final plat process to conform to current practice. And then proposed change of 12 804, so chapter eight's definition, so 804 is a definition of driveway. To try to avoid the creation of non-conforming properties. 12 818, it's an update to the recreational vehicle park definition to align with 12-496. Redefining an RV park as any premise designated for the rental of three or more rather than two or more RVs. 12-819 is a modification of the definition of the street to align better with Roden Bridge Department and GIS definitions of street. Any questions thus far? I know there's a lot there, and we'll go through each one of them. So these are the code provisions that were reviewed and applicable laws that apply to this proposed change. So there were agencies noticed, first for the planning commission, then again, because of the level of changes the planning commission recommended to the board, we thought it prudent to send out for agency review again, but between the two different hearings. So we received comments from Roden Bridge, Panhandle Health, Southside Water and Sewer District, and no comment from the list that you see on the screen and what's in the staff report. There's been several public comments received, all of which are included as part of the record. If I remember right, the majority of the public comments result were around the proposed changes to the vacation rental permit code change that was drafted and proposed to the planning commission, the planning commission decided or removed that from this, or that code changed from this recommendation, decided, because the, more or less, the scope that it turned out to be after there are two different hearings on it, to run that as a separate change all entirely. So I have, since the staff report was written, we discussed this again, and we have three other small immaterial I would consider changes. So you'll see those on the screen in our presentation, I also have them highlighted in a physical copy if you want to see them. There were a couple of words and then some minor change to align better this text amendment with the intent from the planning commission behind the rationale behind the change. So this change in 12 215 would amend the zone change and comp plan map amendment requirements for site plan to read a plan of the site drawn to scale. So some of the analysis behind this is the proposed modification to that section removes some of the site plan requirements from the application requirements for zone changes and comp plan map changes. Modification removes some unfeasible information requirement that is unlikely to be available at the application stage of the zone change request. It conforms with practical implementation of the code in processing zone change and comp plan map change request by Bonner County. So the requirements seem to be a replication or duplication, copy paste, if you will, from the application requirements of the conditional use permit found in 12 222. While such requirements for a site plan are feasible for conditional use permits requesting specific uses for inside-specific buildings with parking and loading areas, traffic circulations, and whatnot. The same typically doesn't apply to zone changes. So that's the proposed change there. Do you want to open up for public comment on each of these, or do you have comments for staff on each of these changes? You want me to go through all of them?
Can we make it clear for the person online then, if they would like to comment? Otherwise, I would propose moving forward, throw it efficiently.
Right.
So for online human, if you have questions on a specific, please raise your hand so that our online manager can let us know that we're paying attention. That's all right, Mr. Chairman.
At work, let's talk to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board?
Not yet.
So this is a change to 12-225, again, it's just adding hearing examiner to the list of, you know, for this code section. 12-223 was changed last year, and this should have been changed at the same time but was missed. So again, this isn't adding any authority for the hearing examiner, that authority comes out of 12-127, which allows the hearing examiner to make decisions on conditional use permits, it's just clarifying this code to say the hearing examiner also, you know, makes these decisions, so. Any questions on that? Any public comment? All right. So I want to discuss the impacts of this proposed change to ensure that the board understands the full ramifications of implementing this. So the first point is modifying the lot or parcel design, so it's adding to apply this to all lots or parcels. The difference between a lot and a parcel is platted versus unplatted, so that's how we determine those. Something that's in a platted subdivision, or it's been platted by a surveyor versus unplatted. So it's a difference in planning, so we're ensuring that it's consistent throughout the code. The changes to the depth-to-width ratios correspond with the proposed change to the lot measurements to ensure that more or less the same sizes and shapes can still be allowed without having, like elongated, we've had some weird, you know, rectangular, but, you know. Just know that the proposed change has been probably four months, six months discussed by the planning department to ensure that we're regulating it correctly, because we saw some misuse. So the change in C was a recommendation from a planning commission, which is submerged lands are not to be included when determining the depth-to-width calculations. So this would be that when you have submerged lands, we don't typically consider those when you're looking at density for land divisions, so when determining a depth-to-width calculation, we would remove those out of the size of the property.
When we did that, is that going to cause some of the existing needs to become non-compliant?
Not necessarily. That's a good question, Mr. Chairman. I don't think so, it might create some legal non-conforming properties. If anything, this is kind of clarifying that submerged lands don't count for density, so therefore they don't count for like your depth-to-width. So most of the times submerged lands like are elongated out into the lake where they only have a usable piece that's smaller. So this would say that usable pieces would have to meet our current code. The planning commission felt it was like a prudent change to recommend to you guys, I think it makes sense as well. This proposal to add section D, so the resulting lot or parcel shall be divided by a boundary of any city, county, zoning designation, railroad right-of-way, or public right-of-way. So.
What kind of little conundrum are we going to get into that somebody say bought a piece of property this week? That our number is submerged. And before today, that was considered a lot size. Now they've bought it, and we changed this, now they can't build on it because they don't have enough dry land.
It doesn't make something unbuildable, what this is applying to is in like a lot line adjustment or a land division process. So we're checking the depth-to-width ratios for just the upland land, not the submerged, so it doesn't make something unbuildable that isn't currently unbuildable, right?
Or else that two weeks.
No, you're fine, and we're not modifying any setback requirements from lakes or anything like that. So again, to this change, proposed change in D, the real big one is, is you're looking at lot line adjustments or boundary line adjustments. Typically, those are like fixes where like, oh, I built over the property line, or someone did 12 years ago, or 30 years ago, and now we need to adjust the property line around, right?
Yeah, we've seen that a couple.
We have. So if the property is currently a split zone property, essentially this would say you can't do any kind of land modification, lot line, boundary line, a land division, without first going through a zone change. So it adds a level of process, and typically, these split zone properties are due to a hastily made 2008 zoning map, so our zoning map has caused us a lot of grief over the years. So this would essentially add some level of bureaucracy, if you want to call it that, application process that currently doesn't exist. So there's some positives to it, and there's some negatives to it. One, it would create more or less split zone properties, so.
It'll slow the process, but it will lead to conformity with code.
Split zone.
For the owner.
For the owner, in a way. Split zones aren't typically, or they're not listed as non-conforming in our code right now. They are, in essence, more difficult to regulate, because you're looking at uses and density that are split on a on a map that was drawn at 30,000 feet.
On one parcel, you could have multiple densities creating different opportunities.
So this would lead to a.
At least a fair.
Either less administrative files like boundary line, lot line adjustments, or it would lead to, and/or it would lead to more zone change applications, so. So is it fair? That's really what it comes down to. That's fine, you can jump up and.
Can I show you something just right up there? It'll be easier to understand what are the implications of that particular.
So since there's someone online, can you grab that microphone while you explain?
Don't think it will help much, because I don't think I'll be able to explain it in words without drawing it. So suppose there are these two parcels. One of them has a public right-of-way going through it, for no fault of the owner. Say this is P1, this is P2. There are many, many lots or parcels in Bonner County which currently have a building sitting right in the middle of the lot, because the building was put in much before the lots were separated, or for whatever reasons, they are legally non-conforming now. What this, because of this code, if this gets implemented today, these people will not be able to boundary line adjust or lot line adjust the parcels in a way that would make the lots conforming, or that would allow them to put this building on one particular parcel. That would prohibit, this particular part of the code would prohibit these adjustments.
It's divided by a right-of-way.
Either divided. Either divided by a right-of-way, or say this property is split zone, say this is suburban, this is R5. But because of this corner just being a split zone property, it will not allow this adjustment to happen.
Wouldn't also depend on the size of the parcel, though. So say it's R5s, and you're in an R5 zone in each of those, or R20s, you could still make that conform.
And you'd have to bring.
No.
P2 either into, take that other corner into R5, or take the other part into suburban. In other words, you'd have to make the line adjustment on the zone.
But you would have to make adjustments where it's not needed. You'd have to, you'd have to move the boundary lines from where it's not needed.
Or do a zone change.
Or do a zone change. For a problem that existed, because in 2008, we created the problem, and now we are asking the landowner to come fix the problem, pay the money, go through a zone change. Or if it is a public right-of-way, there is no way for them to remove that public right-of-way to be able to put the building on their property. So we are creating a lot more problems with this part of the code than we are solving any.
I think we're creating more problems.
Yes, we are.
So this code currently exists in the minor land division code, so it's been implemented for the last five and a half to six years. And we have had people apply through a short plat rather than a minor land division, because a short plat requirement is, doesn't disallow the creation of new lots divided by a zoning district, so you can have split zone properties and. We've created a few, not a lot, there's been a few applications, not recently, but regardless. I think it's a bit hasty at this point, and it could be removed from this and further analyzed by planning staff and come up with a different way to do this, so. I think the lot line and boundary line adjustments, those codes could be modified to not incorporate this change, and it could apply to other land divisions. I think that's really the creation of new lots is what the bigger concern is, that are split, rather than the adjustment of current lots or parcels.
Or bringing some into conformity.
Right. So I think we, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to tackle it. If it's a code you want us to tackle and try to update, we can. This was a bit hasty on my part, and I thought it would be a a way to bring more lots into conformity and more properties into conformity, in a sense of having less split zone properties. Inherently, they're difficult to regulate, like I said. When I reached out to all the planning directors throughout the state, it's not a problem that's statewide, it's kind of county, it's our problem to solve for us. We kind of created it absolutely with a, so perhaps after we update the zoning map, it's a better time to come in with this kind of code change. It is in here, it's in the ordinance, so if you want to amend it, you can and remove that section, and I'll update the ordinance.
That's number three.
So it'd be the changes in 12 621D. Yeah, it's the third amendment that's presented. Any other questions from the board or public comments on this proposed change? So this proposal in 12 660, again, is just modifying the depth-to-width ratios that are allowed. And it's in a response to that change in 12-812, which I'll get to in a moment. I'm sure really, really the question should come around the changes of 12-812. So changes to 12-661, so this is the minor land division review process. So we have a proposal to change the 30-day time limit to 90 days. The reason behind this is that there's not a, there's not a what-if, there's not a recourse in our code that says, you know, if it takes more than 30 days, then it's automatically approved or automatically denied, or it sits on a shelf or something like that. In the summertime, we have currently one contract county surveyor. The board approved a position within, I think, GIS assessor's office for a county surveyor. They tried to get someone hired for, I think, nine or 10 months last year, and didn't have any applicants that were willing to take the job. So we still have a contract county surveyor. That survey firm gets really bogged down, like all the other surveyors, in the summertime, so most often, the survey review, so not our internal, but our contract survey review is taking 45-plus days, especially in June, July, August. So this gives some additional leeway to ensure that, you know, we can meet the code as written. So I have tried to contact, and I have, you know, other surveyors to try to get additional county surveyors on board. I have one that's pending, I'm so wait to hear back from them on some details before I bring it to you guys, but just know we don't really have a problem inside the county office of processing them, it's more of our survey review that's taking a significant time. And then the changes to D are just to align this code with, it's kind of written in an odd way, so it's trying to align the code to current practice, so. It's almost written like it assumes that all MLDs are approved, which always isn't the case. So it's just saying that, so it changes it to read, if administratively approved, the final plat shall be transmitted to the board of county commissioners at the next business meeting for review and possible approval, so that's what we do right now, it's on your consent agendas, that's you guys approving this final plat, which is a requirement by state code. Any questions on that? Let me get one hand raised.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Reg Crawford, Sam Point, Idaho. Once again, I'm here to address the issue of minor land divisions. A point was made at the planning commission hearing by myself and others that adjusting the 30-day to 90-day processing time doesn't address all the processing time issues. One of the reasons I asked to speak today is because there was no opportunity to do so at yesterday's B OCC meeting, and this is pertinent. Yesterday, an MLD file was approved on consent agenda. It was filed on August 2nd, 2021, two days before the MLD loophole was supposedly closed, and three weeks before its two-year expiration date. And it was only one of seven contiguous MLDs filed by the same landowner in this time. This will be the third, this was the third of those seven that have been approved, as far as I can find out. To be clear, then, we are talking about the creation of 28 lots using these MLDs. Problematic is that these MLDs were all filed as placeholders to beat the code change on August 4th. Yeah, apparently the word got out that that would be the publishing date of the new code. All of these MLD applications lacked accurate PIN data, because they either hadn't been assigned one yet, or were dependent on the completion of one of the other seven MLD applications. More specifically, some were sequential, so one couldn't be completed until a previous one was completed. So used as placeholders to divide parcels that weren't yet created. Again, more specifically to the ledges file, these are in a steep area where it was proven that a fire truck could not reach the parcels in question due to the road construction. The development of a subdivision in this location that doesn't have to meet subdivision road design standards is already shown to be a poor decision when a fire did indeed start in this location and was difficult to contain for this very reason. I speak today not only to address these problems within the MLD code, but ask that the remaining four of this applicant's MLDs be denied for being contiguous and for not actually meeting the deadline, because the parcel did not exist at the time of the application. And while this is absolutely not an accusation of any kind, it would be remiss not to mention that the representative for these files was Travis Haller, and that Glahy is the agency used to review MLD files. Furthermore, at the planning commission hearing for this code amendment, I also gave an example of a family in Sagal that had filed 27 quick claim deeds for boundary line adjustments between themselves on one day. And the next day, the mother filed three MLDs on the properties, and I think two of those were not yet in existence. The BLAs illegally created parcels, but there were problems with them, with their surveyings, so the assessor's office kicked them back. And a year later, the BLAs were resubmitted, and with 10 days, the three contiguous MLDs were approved. And finally, I will once again point out that while these administratively approved MLDs only appear on the consent agenda for approval, and the public has no opportunity to comment. This puts the public in the burdensome situation of having to file and pay for an appeal before being even able to understand the reasoning for approval, or being able to voice their objections. I'm not sure if you guys have been briefed yet, or have had an opportunity to read the court's decision on the MLDs, but the court does recognize this as a problem. Please consider denying any further applications for the ledges in the East-West Flu Group, and also consider a thorough review and rewrite of the MLD revised code. Thank you.
Thank you, Reg.
I'm clerk. If we have more comments, could we please utilize the timer? Mr. Chairman, could we just make, I appreciate Reg's comment, but I wasn't sure how that actually is applicable to today's hearing. I appreciate everything she has to say, but we're here specifically today on a specific file, addressing specific specific topic, and I would like to honor that process, so that if there is a review of this process.
So the complication with taking public comment as we go is that I have to take screen privileges away from Jake.
And we could do that if needed.
Yeah, if you want me to do that, I can do that.
I have the technology, I will run a timer, no problem. Perfect.
Any other questions from the board, or anything you want me to address from Reg's comments?
I have one, just for my own clarification. What is the consequence to the county when we simply, I understand, we. When we simply, I understand, we cannot afford a surveyor. I mean, that's what it comes down to. It comes down to simple economics is that we posted a position. The position was not filled. If we leave it within the 30 days, then are we conditionally approving it? Because, or what's, what is the benefit by going to the 90?
So the, the 30 day clause is on staff's initial approval of a minor land division, not on the timeframe in which it needs to be finally approved. So every time these are written, they're written with a condition that they're, if not, you know, submitted for final Mylar review within two years, that they, you know, that the approval goes away, right? So I have since denied some requests for extensions beyond that for contiguous MLDs because I don't think it meets today's code and I got Bill's blessing off on that as well. So I, yes, the, the loophole to to utilize MLDs for contiguous reasons is, has been closed, has been closed for almost two years. We've denied a number of MLDs. I think around 10% last year were denied as we kind of, as the landowners and surveyors kind of tried to get through that code, right? Yes, there are still some outstanding. The, to answer your question, kind of, I went on a tangent, but to answer a question directly, the, right now, it hasn't been challenged in any kind of court setting about the 30 day rule. We have gone over that on numerous occasions. So Bill's concern was to get this through some kind of legal battle.
This is a concern from counsel.
It's a, yes.
Thank you. That's, that is providing the clarification.
And then the changes to D are just an ministerial, or it's a ministerial change to align this code with how our current practice is. So I'm not providing or proposing any other changes drastically to the M L D code, just some minor changes to align, as I said at the very beginning, to align current code with current practice. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? So the proposed change to 12-804, which is the drive, or just the driveway definition of that code section aligns with the proposed changes to the definition of street, which I think is 812. So I'll go over both of those. So the, the provision, there's a, the definition of street carves out an exemption from the streets for driveways and pathways. So really what this comes into is, is setback requirements. So when does a building need to meet street setbacks versus just property line setbacks? So this, there's, and this is a change that we're proposing that's in addition to what's currently in the proposed change. So a private easement or right now it says travelway, we would propose roadway. We found out that travelway is not an actual word, not in our code nor in the dictionary. So we would propose to change that to roadway, which is a word. So a private easement or roadway that provides access to two or fewer single-family residential lots or parcels. So, and this aligns with how GIS interprets when a street name needs to come in, which is when it provides access to three or more. And it's trying, it's an attempt by planning staff to try to create or try to avoid the creation of non-conforming properties, meaning that if there's a, if there's a roadway or a road that, or a driveway that provides access to more than two, eventually it's going to have a road name and then really it should meet setback requirements. So that's what it'd be non-conforming is if we don't regulate it this way in the current, with the way it currently is written. You could build homes closer to, to streets, which would create non-conformity. So here's the proposed changes to the depth width calculations. So it's a rewrite of all of one and then some changes to two. So depth or lot parcel or track shall be measured by the distance between the furthest two points along the boundary of a lot parcel or track. I don't know how many squares, rectangular stars, hearts and others we've drawn to make sure that, you know, what we're trying to draw here in practicality will create essentially squares and rectangles, which is kind of the idea behind when we regulate depth width calculations. And then the changes to B, as you see. So again, these proposed changes is, is to avoid the misuse of the code as currently written along with the changes to the ratio calculations. Any questions on these? I don't see any hands raised either. A proposed change to 12-818, the definition of a recreational vehicle park. So this would change the, what is defined as an RV park from two to three or more recreational vehicles for parking stalls or spaces. So as you may know, 12-496, which is the RV dwelling unit, allows for, for property owners with properties over, I believe, one acre to have two RV dwelling units. So essentially, the intent behind that code was allow for more affordable housing. So if you rented out both of those, like, there's like this conflict of, yes, you can have two of them to solve this problem, but also it could be considered an RV park. So the, the change here is to kind of align with the, the two code sections together. Any questions on that? Alright. So again, a change to, a proposed today from travelway to roadway. So this is a modification to definition of street. So all of these, and I won't go over all of them, I, I should go over the ones that we're proposing, amending today. So the, what's highlighted there is not in your ordinance or in the staff report. So changing travelway again to roadway and then, so this would be a roadway exempting driveways or trails, as I stated earlier, which provides, or is intended to provide vehicular access to adjacent properties, including the following. So all of these other changes were, all came from the planning commission in their hearing. And Don Davis is a retired I T D engineer. So a lot of this came from his technical analysis and expertise on, you know, what is a road and how should they be laid out? So they, they changed thoroughfare from all of these to easement or right of way. So there, there's a number of other changes throughout. If I can, I can answer any of the questions if you like, but most of these came, or all of these came through the planning commission. And then the, our original draft had just a change to that last line. After they proposed the change to the definition of a driveway, they, it was prudent just to strike that altogether. Any changes on, or any questions on those proposed changes? Again, this is to try to align better and a lot of this came through the road and bridge department. I think you have a comment from them saying they, they agree with the proposed changes. So these, these definitions haven't been touched in some time. Any public comments on? Okay. So there's a fairly in-depth comp plan analysis. Staff concludes that it does meet the general and specific objectives of the comp plan. And feel free to review over the staff report. And I, I included some additional arguments and some, I added all of the policies of the comp plan in my review in, in the staff report, which is a little bit further analysis than I gave the planning commission initially. The findings of fact and the conclusions of law. The only finding that we added from the staff report from the planning commission is that the planning commission at the June 6th hearing recommends, recommended unanimous approval of this as presented, except for the four small changes that I, I proposed as well today. The conclusions of law haven't changed since the time the staff report was written. Staff concludes that the amendment as presented has been analyzed and found to be in accordance with the comp plan. See the analysis and that both the planning and the planning commission recommends unanimous approval of the text amendment. And that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm going to answer those. I, I did speak with Bill about the, the small changes I added today and they are small enough that he doesn't think it warrants an additional hearing for it. So the, if the board thinks they're material changes, we could schedule an additional hearing, allow, you know, renotice it and allow for additional public comment on those. But again, legal counsel thought it was immaterial enough that it didn't need a, an additional hearing.
I'd like to return back to the 12-660 minor land division procedure.
Sure.
And I'm looking at Swati, am I to understand from the drawing there? Your analysis is that we're creating more problems if we adopt this than we are solving.
That's not for the, not for the minor land divisions.
It was lot and parcel design?
Yes, 621.
So parcels, I got, I put my star on that one. Yes, it's, so that's 621D.
So it's currently in the M L D code. This change would apply to all chapter six. So any lot line, boundary line, family exemption, subdivision, short plat. So any other chapter six change.
And that is just D?
I think the, the general application to all. The general application of this code to all boundary line adjustments and lot line adjustments, I think is, is a big problem. I think we should, we should be very careful when we adopt this. It's okay to use it for short plats and subdivisions and minor land divisions. We already have it for minor land divisions, but I don't think we should apply it generally to all lot line adjustments and boundary line adjustments.
Staff is, at this time, I'm to understand that this is not a good idea. We're going to create, I don't want to create more headaches.
It will potentially create problems that we will not be able to, it will create violations that we will not be able to fix with our code. We will tell people there is a violation on your property, but we will have no solution for them. We won't have a solution for them.
So in a sense, that's a taking.
Yes.
I don't like that.
We would, we would have to, we, we would have to ask them to take drastic measures to fix those problems that, that we'll keep, we'll create with this part of the code. I don't think we want to do that. Drastic measures such as vacating the right of ways, public right of ways are going through zone changes when they are not required to make, to make small fixes like that.
Travis? I'd like the analysis before I make the decision for the people that haven't observed your exercise today.
So there's the classic saying, Travis Haller, planning staff for record. The classic saying is when you correct one thing, you're inherently taking from another. And Swati is absolutely correct. The intent behind this is to bring it into compliance, how we see it today, right? And so the, the intent with creating new lots, we don't want to create new lots that are split with a public right of way, split zone. However, Swati brings up a great idea. The flip side, however, is when you're not creating a new lot, but just altering lot line adjustments or boundary line adjustments, there is no path forward for that applicant to do that without requiring another process, a zone change, that kind of thing. And, and that's what Swati is saying is we potentially could be creating more of a headache than what we're trying to solve. The intent behind this is great, but it, it just needs to be looked at as a whole.
It could read the resulting lots or parcels of A and list all the applications, right, to which it applies. Shall not be, right? So of a subdivision, short plat, minor land division. Or we could, or we can adjust those other codes to, and adopt this and pull it out of those. So there's a couple of different ways to skin the cat. That's all I'm getting at.
It doesn't appear to me at this time that this one is fully fleshed out.
Right.
Board, am I alone in this? Because I don't want to fix something by breaking something else. I mean, I appreciate the overwhelming majority of this, but I don't want to be responsible and I like the clarity. But when I'm looking at this one, this is providing mud to some processes. Swati?
Yeah, we don't want to fix something little that's going to create something big that doesn't have a solution down below.
What about?
Which happens a lot. That effort to fix a lot of things in this.
And whoever follows.
And a lot of it, you know, when it was for the first time issue of certain things, it never came up. So it wasn't a consideration they never thought of. And then it comes up and it's like, oh wow, well now what do we do? So yeah, we've got a sharp mind that looks forward and says, this is going to create a problem. Now it's time to address it. Rather than when somebody comes in and says, hey, I come on that stuff like this.
So I know we are in the motion, but I'd like to propose, are we in discussion now, Mr. Chairman?
We can probably close for public comment and move to deliberation.
Close to public comment and go to deliberation. Put our heads together and make three notes.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that, at least for myself, that we strike the suggested change of lot and parcel design section D and remand it back to planning staff to come up with a solution that does not create new problems. But other than that, I'm prepared to make a motion on the rest of this.
I can support the first part of striking it until anything.
You could do it in two motions, make a motion to strike that from the, and then do a motion to approve as amended. Does the board agree with the proposed changes, the highlighted ones that I presented today?
I agree with all of them. Would you like a separate motion to accept those as well?
Not necessarily.
The travelways to roadways and the striking of proposed. Do this. Mr. Chairman, I move to strike the proposed change two of today's date for 12-621 lot and parcel design D and remand it back to planning staff for analysis.
Second motion.
And roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I gave you a, an adopt, so I forgot to put in the motion for the ordinance approval. So I've added that as a second, because I printed page today.
Give the motion for that.
Yep.
But that will be after the.
After the approval.
After the approval, yeah.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this file AM 0005-23 as amended to amend the sections of Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan as enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. At one, the Bonner County Planning Department has reviewed the proposed changes against Idaho code and made amendments to better comply with Idaho code, specifically Title 67 and Chapter 65. The Board of County, two, the Board of County Commissioners is authorized by Idaho code, Chapter 7, Title 31, to adopt ordinances, rules and regulations not repugnant to law necessary for carrying into effect or discharging the powers and duties conferred by the laws of the state of Idaho and such as are necessary or proper to provide for the safety of the health and prosperity through the morals, peace and good order, comfort and convenience of the county and the inhabitants thereof and for the protection of property therein. Proposed ordinance making the above changes adds to the clarity intended in the interpretation of Bonner County Revised Code, Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. These actions will further balance the provision of safety, health and prosperity while maintaining the protection of property, peace, good order, comfort and convenience of the county and its inhabitants. Number three in the findings of fact, this proposed change provides further clarification of the regulations enabling the public and the staff to achieve the best results leading to greater understanding and use of the zoning ordinance. Findings of fact number four, the planning commission at the June 6th, 2023 public hearing recommended approval of the proposed amendment by unanimous vote. Conclusions of law finds that. Conclusions of law finds that, number one, the proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code Title 31, Chapter 7. Conclusion of law, number two, proposed amendment is in accord with Idaho Code Title 67, Chapter 65. Conclusion of law, number three, the proposed amendment is in accord with all the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. So, based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staffers' report was prepared, a testimony received at the hearing, I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusion as set forth and read into this motion and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking of private property. Roll call vote? Yes, ma'am.
I abstain, as I haven't been able to get some information from some parties regarding the proposed changes to 12-215, to the MLD procedure, as that's one where the community is asking the board to actually do a full review of it, and to the definition of recreational vehicle. It's not focused specifically on that, it's just the time for people giving responses back to you on some questions, the community members. Do you recognize that it will forward, move forward? We're still, we must abstain until I get the answers to that question.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned citing its authority in providing for the amendment of Title 12 Bonner County Revised Code as presented or amended in this hearing and providing for an effective date.
Second motion.
Roll call vote? Yes, ma'am.
I abstain for the reasons previously stated.
Yes.
Ready?
And I'll get an updated ordinance with the changes that you guys made before I get your signature.